Yeah.
You work at OT?
Yeah.
I'm gonna get out of here as soon as I'm done, right? I'll be back.
Unarmed gun is still here.
Oh, you are? Oh, you are? Hey, Jack.
Hey.
How you doing?
How you doing?
All right.
Let's see him. Let's see. That's in the afternoon today.
I was just saying. So I'm gonna hold you to that. I'm gonna hold you to that. That's the over/under.
What time do we have?
Uh, I have six fifty-four. All right, Joe, have fun.
Where do you live?
Uh, just right down the street, near the, from the tech school area.
Oh, you're down that way? Yeah, I'm behind, I'm up the other way, college.
Okay.
The heights are weird, too.
My mother's a lot closer, she's right down.
Oh, yeah, hillside, yeah. Small.
Yeah, I grew up in country, so I'm there. It's just I can't wait to move back.
Take the pond off this side, yeah. Yeah, I don't know if you, if you make Phil, Gravine, he's used to country, never drives. Yeah, he's a, he's a, he's a, he's used to country. I grew up across the, the A field, the B field, whatever. His dad on the farm down there, the thing is, it's now that Mexican place, uh... It used to be, I can't think of the name. Nah, it was a farm, they bought it, it's damn, it's not, it's all fa- extra. It's, uh... Yes, yes. And he's, yeah, he's that, he goes, uh, "That was my dad's barn," and he says, "That doesn't look like a barn anymore." Well, yeah, they did it over there. So, that's how he grew up. Yeah, it was a farm, a park.
I was on Hector Street for a while.
Okay.
So, like, when we were on Hector Street, we were called from, uh, the Model T at the time, now it's Country Corner.
Okay. Oh, they have a street there, yeah, they have a street.
Are you on a tab?
I'm on a tab. I'm, I'll tab.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just.
Go ahead for a tab, please.
I, I, I'll be able to tell when you're... You can always say next, but...
Okay.
If it doesn't move, you say next.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Good evening, I'd like to call the September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two Mathacton Board of School Directors meeting to order. Please rise for the clutch. The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. There was an executive session of the board held virtually on September twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two, at eight P.M. for the purpose of seeking advice from legal counsel on potential litigation involving right-to-know matters. By way of attendance, um, all board members except for Mr. Brown are in attendance. And next, we have guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, this evening, we have a number of, uh, speakers. Uh, first, um, I want to just make a few announcements before we go into that. Item number six on the agenda, the appointment of new student board representatives, will occur, uh, after following the public comment on board action items, which is currently labeled as number eight. So that item will occur after number eight on the agenda. The, uh, the next thing that I want to share is, uh, this evening, uh, there are actually two presentations. But first, and, and maybe, uh, one of the most important that we do each and every month during school year, is the Employee Award of Excellence. And here this evening, uh, we have none other than our communications, uh, person, Ms. Kelly, uh, to, to stand before you and present our awardees for this month of September, two thousand twenty-two. Ms. Kelly?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi, and good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to present to the Board of School Directors and the Mathacton community six Mathacton employees who represent the Facilities Department and the Farina Office. These individuals are being recognized for the significant contribution they make to the district in supporting their colleagues, our students and their families, as well as our entire community. Here are the September recipients of the Award of, of Excellence. We will begin with Dana Wilson, Human Resources Secretary. Dana Wilson joined the Human Resources Team in twenty-twenty-two after several years of working with the team and the Office of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Dana is an exceptional professional who routinely goes above and beyond expectations to serve the staff of the Mathacton School District. She is often the first person that individuals encounter during the application and interview process to become a Mathacton employee. And in this role, Dana is a welcoming and kind embodiment of all that is positive about being a member of the Mathacton family. Conscientious, problem-solving, and insightful leadership are hallmarks of Dana's contributions to the Human Resources Team. We are grateful that Dana is a member of the Mathacton family. Thank you, Dana. Our next award recipient is Krista Fryland, our Communications Secretary. Krista joined the Mathacton School District as our Communications Secretary in August of twenty-twenty-one. Her background in creative design and marketing has provided support to the district's external and internal communication and our goal of providing an exceptional experience for all. Krista is organized, takes pride in her work, and tackles all tasks with enthusiasm and a fresh perspective. She designed the logos for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, and twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year themes. Among her many accomplishments, Krista's work has helped us find tremendous growth and engagement on the district's social media channels and an improvement in the read rate of our district newsletters. Krista has added layers of strength, creativity, and excitement to the Communications Department and is a terrific addition to the Mathacton team. Thank you, Krista. Our next award recipient is Ted Nitterberger, he's a custodian. Uh, Ted joined our casual home call custodial team in October of twenty-fourteen and as a full-time employee in March, twenty-nineteen. Ted's professionalism and positive attitude are some of his greatest characteristics. He has expressed and shown his desire to advance in positions by acquiring his pesticide application license. Ted is currently covering a position on our grounds crew and is excelling on the team as well. His hard work and dedication to the facilities team are greatly appreciated. Thank you, Ted. Our next award recipient is Derek Gennarda. Derek joined the Mathacton School District in October twenty-fourteen as our HVAC Master Mechanic. Derek's expertise of knowledge in the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems are exceptional. We appreciate his continued effort to ensure all building systems are in good working condition. His vast knowledge, not only in HVAC, but also in other technical areas of facilities, are extremely beneficial. Derek is a great asset to the Mathacton School District and the facilities team. Thank you, Derek. Our next recipient is Shaleed Ford B. Shaleed is one of our newly hired custodians, joining our team in July of twenty-twenty-one. Shaleed came to Mathacton with several years of custodial experience. His positive attitude and organizational skills are most impressive. Shaleed is not one to shy away from assisting others when needed. We appreciate his hard work and dedication and welcome his continued efforts to progress as a member of the facilities team. Thank you, Shaleed. And last, but certainly not least, we have Michael LaRoe. Michael is a custodian. Michael has been a member of the Mathacton School District for many years, beginning his career as a bus driver before becoming a full-time custodian in January of twenty-twenty-one. His dedication and work ethic are exemplary. We appreciate his positive attitude and his continued efforts to learn. Michael has quickly become a valued member of the facilities team. And thank you. And that concludes this presentation. Thank you all. And I gotta get a photo.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly, for, uh, that presentation. Next on the agenda, we have the M Award, we have Dr. Gravine's high school principal, to present student M Awards.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me tonight. Could we have the next slide, please? So, an M Award. To achieve an M Award, students have to have a ninety-three percent grade point average for the school year. Last year, for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year, we had four hundred and thirty students earn an M Award. So, in addition to the presentation this evening, uh, students will be called down to the counseling office tomorrow to be able to pick up their award. So, given there are so many of them, we're just going to click through the slides, but I want to start with our grade twelve seniors. Next slide, please. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. And that concludes our seniors. Next slide for our juniors. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. And that concludes our juniors and our tenth graders. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. And next slide. So, congratulations, students, parents, and guardians. Uh, students will be called down to the counseling office tomorrow to pick up this great award, and we're very proud of their efforts. Thank you.
Dr. Gravine, so I want to thank you for your leadership and, uh, for the efforts by both the professional and support staff at the high school for preparing these, uh, students who are excelling in, in not only, uh, life, uh, but academically here as, as presented. Fourteen thirty students, that's, that's quite an accomplishment. And, uh, thank you for your leadership in getting them, uh, to this very, uh, stage. And we have more of those M Awards to come in the future, I imagine. So, thank you so much. Next, on the agenda, we would then move into reports. I'll turn it back over to, uh, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Um, reports are as attached. Um, so tonight, we are going to be having, um, DEI report from Ms. Washington.
And, and, so just, uh, proper introductions. Uh, we, we have Alexis Washington here with us this evening. She started, uh, at some point in the summer with us, uh, on, on and off, and then obviously started her first, uh, uh, regular assignment with us as the, uh, counselor, DEI, the K-12 DEI Inclined School Counselor here at Mathacton School District. And thanks to the support of, of the Board of School Directors, uh, we now have Alexis onboard. Uh, we certainly have, uh, like we've talked for the last several years, uh, a lot of good work ahead of us, and, uh, we are, uh, thankful, uh, for, uh, the opportunity to not only work with Alexis, but to start moving in some of those, uh, on some of those matters. So, with that said, Alexis, uh, please share with the board and the public, you know, what we've done to date so far and how we're, uh, you know, welcoming you to, uh, the Mathacton School District.
Uh, well, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight, and thanks for the warm welcome from everyone at the Mathacton. I would like to share with you some highlights from my first month. At the start of the school year, I met with Dr. Susan Inkstark, Director of People's Services, and Che Regina, Assistant Superintendent, to discuss my entry plan for my first year. This was after a summer of orientation to the Mathacton School District, going to each building with Dr. Inkstark and Che to meet with each building principal, and beginning to connect with other DEI leaders in the greater Philadelphia area through monthly student gatherings. This month, my first priority has been to conduct building tours and informal climate walk groups with each of the seven building principals within the district. In conjunction with these climate walk groups, I will be participating in the initiative led by Dr. Inkstark and People's Services with rolling out trauma-informed care and staff and student wellness. This includes serving on the district-level connections team and participating in the professional development provided by Tom Seker and his team throughout the school year. This month, I have also begun participating in the counselor department meetings and will be an active participant in the K-12 Counseling Review being conducted by the Chester County Intermediate Union. Other initiatives that I will be supporting include working with the special education supervisors to support the district's efforts on increasing practices. In particular, working with the Skyview Administrative Team as we expand this effort and participating in an upcoming special education alignments meeting. Our goal in Skyview, I will work with the building principals and Dr. Inkstark to search for building bullying prevention speakers and research evidence programs. In addition to weekly meetings with Dr. Inkstark and Che, I will also be scheduling times to meet with the special education supervisors and members of the curriculum department in the near future. All of these introductions in the beginning couple of months are focused on the mission of learning from various district-level leaders on how this role as a K-12 DEI Inclined Counselor can work to ensure an exceptional Mathacton School District experience for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. Any questions from the board?
Just a quick welcome. It's so nice to put a name to a face. We are so excited to have you here. So, we look forward to hearing from you again. Thank you.
Just a quick question. How can, um, I guess, the faculty, students, and parents reach out to you? What's the best way to contact you?
Um, currently, uh, any matters that are sent to the building principals will loop me in as almost a channel nine coordinator. And that's a really good way for me to get activated to the processes at the Mathacton.
Thank you, welcome. Um, all right, next, we have a report from the, uh, U of U.
Um, we met back on, um, August twenty-fourth. Um, I'll be brief, but a couple of things I wanted to mention. Um, at most meetings, we're given a presentation of important IU, um, departments, shall you say. And we had a wonderful presentation by the Patton Office, and I won't go into all of that, but Patton really helps with special education. And they specifically asked me to, uh, encourage all of our staff, um, who might need to use some special education resources, to use their bulletin. And if you go to, uh, the IU website, and you go to Patton, and you go and you find the Bureau of Special Education's bulletin, it really has some great information. So, they asked me to plug that. Um, just like everywhere, the IU has been very, very busy hiring. So, they had, uh, they're, they were still hiring. So, they were between fifty and sixty new employees at the IU. Um, and then I haven't really spoken about this, but, um, I've been kind of waiting for it to be signed, sealed, and delivered. But the IU had just purchased a Morris Road property, and it took a little bit of work from some township supervisors and other people to get some zoning and things in place. And so, they will have another new property eventually that's going to have head start, pre-K counts, and transition programs. And people may wonder why I bring that up, because the Montgomery County IU is such a valuable resource that these, any more resources that are available to, to people in our county and in our specific district is wonderful. Um, and this, uh, early learning academy building dedication has... has been on, I don't know, a three-year hold due to COVID. But finally, I might not be there, but if anybody does want to, on the board or any administrators want to attend the final building dedication of the IU Early Learning Academy, it is Friday until the first at 12:30. And I can send you all the information if you're interested. And I have said this before at a meeting, but for those of us who've been educators for a really long time, it's the building that we all used to go to to make posters and pick up materials before we had such things in our district. So, that wonderful building is now officially fully dedicated as the Early Learning Academy. And one day soon, this Morris Road property will be working for the IU. And then we will be meeting tomorrow. I will fill you in in October. I will not be at the meeting tomorrow. I will be being a Mathacton parent at a little club for a Mathacton Girl Senior Night. So, if anybody wants to come out and watch, I will be there. So, I will fill you in on the meeting. I'll get the information. And I guess I'll go right into North Montauk. We met on September 19th. It was a great start to the school year. Miss Part of it shared, it's probably been one of the best in a long time. And just like everywhere else, they were busy hiring. They were able to find a new carpentry teacher and a new biomedical teacher who will be starting shortly. Still in the works at the Mechatronics, we had a phenomenal Mechatronics instructor who was in a very long commute, like over an hour. And finally, a physician opened up closer to his home. So, they are working really hard to get that filled. I know Mechatronics is a very popular program at the school. Our boardroom where we meet is still a little bit delayed due to supply issues and needing Bluetooth microphones, but we're going to give it a go in person next month. And Liz and I will make sure to keep you apprised, but they're always looking at possible new programs. And some of the new programs that might come down the pipe you might be hearing about is social media and digital marketing technology, building construction and property maintenance, and service occupation. So, we will fill you in on that as they become, as the information is confirmed. Let me see if I hit everything. Is there anything you want to add, Liz?
I think you hit everything. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Reese. We will do the Student Board Representatives Report after they are sworn in. Then we have the report from the Mathacton Education Foundation. Welcome, Ms. Scaregiling.
Thank you, guys, for the opportunity to speak. I want to introduce myself, because I haven't met quite a few of you, but I'm the new Executive Director of the Education Foundation. And for those who don't know, the Education Foundation is an independent 501(c)(3) based on the idea that public education can be enhanced through community support. So, we provided innovative educational opportunities in the district, and we've granted over $970,000 to date. And we should hit the million-dollar contribution mark this year. So, it's exciting stuff. So, I have three updates. Our APEX Award is going to be held this Thursday. Again, this event is a fundraiser to help us reach that funding for the foundation, and we honor outstanding members of the community. And the honors this year are Nancy Marcinka, who is a beloved art teacher retired from the high school, Jennifer Holm, who is a Mathacton grad, and she's an award-winning young adult novelist, the Daily Bread Community Pantry, and this organization helps eliminate hunger in our community, Kevin Solomon, another Mathacton graduate who leads environmental cleanup programs, and then the 1989 Field Hockey State Chance. So, it should be a fun evening. For me, more information, it's on our website, mathactonfoundation.org, and I hope to see all of you there. Another event we're having on this Friday, it's the First Welcome Back Boarder. So, we started Alumni Foundation, and this is the Alumni and Friends Event. And everyone's invited to tour the high school, the planetarium, and attend a special tailgate at the football game, and there's an evening social. There are still tickets available, so people can register at mathactonalumniboard. And then lastly, we are happy to announce that the grant window is open for all staff to apply for funding. We're looking for innovative ideas and programs, and all proposals must be consistent with the goals and missions of the foundation. So, they have to enhance the enrichment opportunities for the school. And again, that'll be on our website, and they can find out what we fund and how to apply. So, I just want to thank you for your guidance, for your time, and really excited for the opportunity to partner with all of you, and we have some big plans for the future.
Thank you very much.
I could just add, she was my co-conspirator on a number of bus trips across the Mathacton community. And so, she got her steps in up and down the bus this last week or so. So, thank you so much for doing that. But it's really important, as you might imagine. It's not even, you know, the amount of money that the foundation has invested and raised for programs and for staff here at Mathacton School District is just a tip of the iceberg. The relationships that they've been able to bring forward and the ideas and the opportunities beyond just a shoe of dollars is just extraordinary. So, I've got to thank you for taking this leadership opportunity as well as thank the President and Education Foundation for all of their hard work and their enduring support of our students and communities.
Next, we have Communications. Ms. Keller.
Hello, and good to see you again. Ms. Scaregiling, you mentioned the APEX Awards, so I'm just not going to reiterate everything. We hope to see everyone there Thursday, September 29th. Parents of Mathacton High School students are invited to register for our annual financial aid nights, a really important event that the counseling department at the high school puts on. That takes place on Monday, October 3rd, from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. The event is designed to help families learn more about the process of applying for financial aid through the FISA program as well as the CSS profile for the College Board. There is still plenty of time to register. Look for the link on the district or the high school websites under upcoming events. And just to let you all know, our Planetarium shows, you may have been to a show so far, but our shows are back for a new season. The September shows were a really big hit, according to Mr. Chantry. Next month's shows are set for October 19th. So, make it a fun night out with your family and friends. Tickets are available for purchase online at mathactonawards/planetix and at the door on the night of the show on a first-come, first-served basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keller. Next, we have the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Madam President. As you can see, there's a number of advisements for your review, but there are actually three other items that I want to share. The first is Audubon Elementary School property update. And it is my recommendation that the agenda for November 2022 include an action item on the determination of the Audubon Elementary School. At this point, I have shared options for the board's consideration to either sell or keep the property and an option that could even allow for the township of Lower Providence to partner to bring forward opportunities for the Mathacton community. I've had discussions with the township manager and apprised him that my recommendation will be to keep the property, but in order to limit our ongoing expenses is to have the building up. In speaking with the township manager, it was made clear that any future partnership that requires all or some of the existing building, assuming that the school board agrees with my recommendation, is the underlying issue that needs to be resolved in the short term. I will make another presentation in October so that the board has other opportunity to consider the matter. I will also be communicating this matter to the public over the next two months through some of my written communications to apprise them of the pending decision. And certainly, we'll be bringing this before the Property and Finance Committee for the month of October and November. That ends my report on the Audubon Elementary School update. The next item I have is Strategic Plan Update. This is rather brief, but the public notice was emailed to all Strategic Plan Focus Week participants. We have a website updated that includes the task and the web application to monitor the progress. And as an example, you'll see item 14F on the agenda this evening being a part of that in terms of the request to have a contract with the Chester County IU for the K-12 School Counseling Review. This is all part of a task needed to ensure that exceptional Mathacton sports teams experience for all. And the last item I'd like to share is certainly unfortunate matter, and I'd like to show that Patricia Noel. While she was not an employee of the Mathacton School District, she is certainly a member of the Mathacton family. And she was a long-term employee of Aramoa. And unfortunately, she passed on premise on September 22nd, just Thursday of last week. She will be remembered for her parent raise and her attention to detail and her outlook on life. Patricia has left a significant hole in the Aramoa cooperation, one that probably will never be able to be filled. But it's my tendency to ask the board and the public to just join with me for just a few moments of silence and remembrance of Patricia Noel. Thank you. That is my report for the session.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Now, it is time for public comment on board action items. This is an opportunity for residents to comment on matters that are to be decided upon as outlined on the agenda. The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. The Board of School Directors may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments on board action items.
Good evening. John Lambries, Long Province. I have two items relative to the list of bills. One of them, the check number 202742, the vendor advocacy alliance. And the contracted item, the purchased item, education service for the round number of $30,000. I guess I'm interested in what explanation might be available for that line item. Next one, check number 1098 to the Audubon Water Company for temporary water service connection, again, for $30,000. I'm not sure what school building that's for. If it's Arrowhead, I'm wondering why isn't it a change order? And then there's a series of checks for the Variety Club for their support activities. Oh, it's past summer for $170,000, rough number. Seemingly, that, in my mind, that would keep the Variety Club pretty busy. And I imagine it's just for extra services for young Mathacton residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Is there another public comment on board action items? I'm going to see none. We will go back to number six, which is the appointment of new student board representatives and the administrative oath of office. Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the appointment of student board representatives? The Mathacton High School juniors Erica Sincere and Leah Zhang as student board representatives to the Board of School Directors for a term of two years, effective 2022, 2023, and senior Samiksha Panda as student board representative to the Board of School Directors for a term of one year, effective 2022, 2023. Can I get a motion? Ms. Reese, in a second. Ms. Purdue, any comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Carrie Spitz here. Thank you. Would you like to raise your right hand and repeat the following for me? I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and that I will discharge the duties of the office of student representative to the board with fidelity. Thank you very much. All right, we're jumping around our agenda a little bit, but once you're settled in, are you ready? And then we'll do the, we'll now do the Student Board Representative Report.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As said, my name is Erica Sincere. I am the student representative from Mathacton. I will be starting off with the school session. The girls' soccer team lost 2-8, ranking no place in the district. Boys' soccer lost 4-5, ranked 25th in the district. Field hockey won their first game, I almost said first game, won their recent game 10-1, ranking 7th in the district. Our football team tied the football team tied 2-2, ranking 16th in the district. And our volleyball team won 7-3, ranking 14th in the district. The men's soccer football team won against both Boston Hiccups and Norris Town teams. Wait, I'm missing one, so sorry. But Mathacton has received a 2022 and 2021 PIAA district first sportmanship vote. But that could be mine. My report.
Good evening. My name is Leah, and I'm honored to be talking with you all today. This year's Homecoming Dance is on Thursday, October 6th, and will take place in the main gym from 7:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. The theme for the dance this year is a starry night, which is chosen by the students in a vote. The tickets will be sold for $20 during lunch on September 29th and 30th, and October 3rd and 4th. The first 500 students to buy tickets get a free Mathacton t-shirt. There will be no traditional homecoming Queen or King this year as the district has pivoted to a more inclusive new tradition. A representative from each fall sports team and activity will be honored on the field, accompanied by a student from K through 8 that also is a student, is a leader in their school, and represents the values of the school. The K through 8 students were chosen by their principals to represent their schools at halftime. The high school representatives are chosen by their coach or sponsors. We will have a pep rally on Friday, October 7th, where we will have interclass competitions as well as the powder puff football game. Moving on from homecoming news, today, the 27th, the AP exam order window is open and will close on October 14th. Clubs such as Minithon, Medicine and Science, Girls Who Code, and Habitat for Humanity have begun. Lastly, the National Honor Society's application deadline was today, and the Minithon committee's selection was also due today. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your report. Great time. All right. Okay. Now, can I get a motion for board meeting minutes? A motion to approve the August 23rd, 2022 regular board meeting minutes as attached. Ms. Rockhill, a second. Mr. Brookstool, any comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Eight, zero. Thank you. Next is fiscal items. Mr. Ricker.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight, we approve we had the list of bills, the treasures report. There are no voluntary transfers. The motion to increase the lifeguard, swim instructor, and student summer help to $15 per hour, effective October 1st, 2022. And to Arrowhead construction, we have six changes.
Thank you. Does anyone want to take anything separately on fiscal items? Can I get a motion to approve all fiscal items as attached? Mr. McGinnis, and a second. Mr. Brookstool, thank you. Any comments or questions from the board?
Can we address Mr. Andrews' questions? I don't want to answer incorrectly, but I could probably answer most of them. I don't know if we're able to. So first, the Variety Club. I'm assuming that is for all of the students that qualify to attend the camp.
Yes, why?
The CEESY, Extended Summer School Year. Dr. Andrews, or Mr. Andrews, excuse me. Anyone want to take Audubon Water? Check 1098, or we can get back to him.
The $30,000 was a part of the escrow on the repair that needed to be done in order to bring water service to the Arrowhead Elementary School as part of the reconstruction. So that money will be returned probably by the end of October since what happened, looks and stuff that has been included in terms of installing.
And then I don't know if anyone knows off the top of their head. Check 202742 for the Advocacy Alliance, the education service for $30,000. Doctor?
It's a check from the center.
Okay. Understood. Thank you. I'm sorry. Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, eight, zero. Thank you. Next, we have personnel items. Dr. Serje.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam President, for your consideration this month. We have the following personnel items. I will highlight those that are additions from the work session agenda last week. We have four resignations professional, including the addition of Lori Shaw, school counselor at Eagleville, rather, resignation for retirement, effective January 1st, 2023. Lori's selfless commitment to meeting the needs of children and her steadfast guidance at both the elementary and secondary levels during her career in Mathacton have made her an invaluable asset to our community. The Mathacton family extends our gratitude to Lori, and we wish her well in her retirement. We have three resignations classified, two job descriptions, four employment professionals, including the additions of Katie Donnelly, special education instructor at Woodland, Gabrielle Arthur, special education instructor at the high school, and David Dill, English instructor at the high school. We welcome Katie, Gabby, and David to the Mathacton family, and we look forward to the good work that they'll do with our students in the years to come. We have four employment classifieds, two changes of status classifieds, one uncompensated leave professional, one uncompensated leave classified, supplemental contracts, including the addition of club and activity sponsors for the 2022, 2023 school year, one addition to the classified substitute list, Mark Gerung, casual and call custodian. We welcome Mark to Mathacton. Three community education swim instructors and additions to the list of district-approved volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Serje. Can I get a motion to approve all personnel items as attached? Ms. Reese, and a second. Sorry, Mr. Winter, did you want to take something separately?
Yes, please. I could take 11 and 18, please.
Okay.
Maybe 11 and 18.
11 and 18. Okay, thank you. All right, can I get a motion then to approve all personnel items except for 11 and 18 as attached? Ms. Reese, a second on that one. Ms. Perdue, any questions or comments on those items? Okay. Yes, Ms. Reese.
Sorry, just a quick one. With the guidance counselor, since that is a unique position, is it our goal to have a little bit of, if possible, a little bit of overlap? Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Definitely in December, that's our goal.
Okay. Thank you so much. And welcome, Ms. Donnelly. Since I know you've worked in our buildings before, it's nice to actually have you as a Mathacton employee versus a contract employee.
All right, any other comments on those items? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Eight, zero. Thank you. Then may I have a motion to approve 11 and 18, the supplemental contracts in the amount of $252,000, $252,000, $108,060 for sponsors per the attached list, effective 2022, 2023 school year? May I have a motion? Ms. Cancro, and a second. Ms. Perdue, and comments?
Yes. In accordance with Section 1103J, the Pennsylvania Public Official Employee Apex Act, I already submitted this form to the secretary that explains my conflict of interest under the Apex Act. The nature of my interest is that my wife's approval as a sponsor of the National Honor Society at high school can be compensated for the supplemental contract.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on that item? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Thank you. All right, next is curriculum and programs.
There are no matters of curriculum or program this evening. We'll go on policy.
Okay, policy.
Thank you. For ignorance for first read, not for voting items this evening, we do have 207, 208, 209.2, and 209.3. All grammatical fixes and pronoun modifications. Threat assessment is a new policy. We do have some revisions to the initial one that we looked at with some of the act of compliance updates. And then those will all be here for second read next month. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And next, we have other.
Thank you, Madam President. Under other, we have trips. There are actually two trips from, and I'll just leave you the things that aren't, that weren't on the work session agenda. The two trips are approve the Mathacton High School cheerleading trip to Dallas, Texas, or the NCAA True Leading Nationals scheduled January 20th to 23rd, 2023. And the second one is approve the Oklahoma MBE school trip to Maine, to the city, and the annual Maine exchange trip as part of the cultural exchange program scheduled February 1st through 5th, 2023. And there are no other new items on the agenda from the work session.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve items under other? Ms. Reese, and a second. Mr. McGinnis, any questions or comments on that? I actually had a question on trips. Are the costs associated to the district for the trips?
Right now, no.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just add, it's so nice to see trips back. And if anyone isn't aware of it, if anyone lives in our Cola Parent out there listening, I know that Maine trip is very nice to see back and has been a popular past experience for students, so.
And Ms. Reese, yes, it is nice. All right, any other comments under other? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Eight, zero. Thank you. All right, then we have dates for board members' calendars as listed. Is there anything for old or new business from the board?
Okay, I just want to ask you a quick question on something. Ms. Reese, if you could go back to North Monaco, I've jotted down the two possible programs, but if you could go back on my key posts, I missed one, and I wanted to do two more.
Social media and digital marketing technology.
Social media and digital marketing technology, building construction and property maintenance, and service occupations. And I'll get more information on any of those that you're interested in. I kind of jotted them down during the meeting because they're not official yet. We're just in talks.
Any other old, new business? All right. It's time for courtesy of the floor, where this Board of School Directors provides an opportunity for residents to make comments on matters that are or may be before the board. The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. The Board of School Directors may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments. You can submit questions via email to information@mathactonboard. Is there anyone for courtesy of the floor? Seeing none, may I have any closing comments from the board? Motion to adjourn. Mr. McGinnis, a second on that. Ms. Perdue, meaning adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.